Fran, eu vejo que você está aqui. Você pode...
Sim.
Ok, bom.
Você pode me ouvir? Eu tenho meu... Então, é às 7:00, o seu tempo. E temos quatro pessoas. E como começamos?
Bom, eu só vejo... Oh, tem o Steve Taylor. Sim, estamos prontos para ir.
Tudo bem. E uma vez mais, eu tenho que ler esse preámbulo. Então, espero que as pessoas possam se preparar. Boa noite. E a Presidente do Lebanon Public Library, David Frestes. O Presidente do Coronavírus, Sean Fleming, apresenta o pedido de emergência do governante Semenu, o pedido de emergência número 12, emitido em 2020. Em concordância com o pedido executivo de emergência 2020-4, o público pode ter ouvir ou não, de acordo com as situações físicas da localização. Por favor, note que não há situações físicas de localização que haja em algum lugar do país. No entanto, em concordância com o pedido de emergência número 12, tomamos medidas para fornecer acesso público à reunião por telefone, com acesso potencial adicional por vídeo. Fornecer notícias públicas das informações necessárias para acessar a reunião e fornecer um mecanismo para o público alertar o público durante a reunião, se houver problemas com acesso. Para esta reunião, Microsoft Teams está sendo usado como plataforma de comunicação. Todos os membros da board têm a habilidade de comunicar contemporaneamente. O público tem acesso a escutar contemporaneamente e, se necessário, participar da reunião. Eles podem visitar lebanonnh.gov/live clicando no pertinente relatório de reunião. Instruções sobre como atender são providas na página web. Para as horas de preparação da reunião, e para garantir que todos os participantes sejam conscientes de quem está participando, todos os oradores são obrigados a identificar-se e a escrever os nomes primeiros e últimos antes de começar a falar. Nós passamos o escrita. Para garantir a melhor transmissão possível do conteúdo da reunião, é sugerido que você desabilite a câmera em seu dispositivo escolhido para reduzir o feed de vídeo e aumentar o banda de banda disponível para todos os atendidos. E para melhorar a qualidade do som e reduzir a quantidade de feedback no sistema, por favor, certifique-se de que seus microfones estão mutados a menos que você esteja fazendo uma pergunta ou fazendo um comentário. Se alguém tem um problema com o acesso durante o curso da reunião, por favor, ligue... Esse é o Sean Fleming, ao 603 359 3604 ou envie o e-mail sean@fleming@leblyr.com. Se houver dificuldades técnicas e não sermos capazes de conter a reunião, será adjuntado e resseguelo. Todos os votos tomados durante esta reunião serão feitos por votação de rola. A reunião começará ao tomar atendimento de rola. E quando cada membro estabelecer seu nome, por favor, indique se há alguém na sala com você, o que é exigido sob o RSA 91-A.
Os brincos estão chegando. Isso é um experimento.
É muito divertido.
Tudo bem, então...
Ok, sim, ela está aqui hoje por causa da reunião. Ok, tá. Vejo vocês.
Vamos fazer uma rola. Eu vejo que Anne Sharfstein.
Sim, eu sou a Presidente e estou sozinha na rola.
Steve Taylor.
Eu estou aqui e estou sozinho para a reunião.
Susan Valiente.
Eu também estou aqui e estou sozinha para a reunião.
Acho que deveria perguntar a todos, certo? Amy Lappin.
Eu estou aqui e estou sozinha.
Sean Fleming. Você está mutado, então eu não posso ouvir.
Eu estou aqui e sou o presente de minha filha Evelyn Fleming e minha filha Gwyneth Fleming.
Morgan.
Eu estou aqui e estou sozinho na sala.
Susan DeRosa.
Eu também estou aqui e estou sozinha na sala.
E eu sou Fran Oskedell, e estou sozinha na sala. E a Barbara é a hora de tomada. Então, vamos ver, eu tenho isso aqui. Não, então... E agora precisamos verificar quem vai poder votar. Temos um coro. Então, precisamos de alguém alternativo votando? Eu não sei.
Eu acho que se há alguém que é membro votado que não está atendendo, isso seria Laura Barrett, então Emma faria a sua lugar. Somos só um alternato agora. Se tiver mais de um alternato, você teria que tomar uma decisão, mas eu acho que hoje é muito fácil. É apenas Emma e Laura.
E Emma ainda não está aqui, se ela for...
Eu estou aqui.
Oh, você está. Como eu não vejo?
E eu estou sozinha. Oh, eu estou sozinha.
Ok, obrigado, Emma. Estou tentando escrever o nome de todos, para que eu saiba como fazer todas estas votações de rola. Tudo bem, o primeiro item na agenda. Bem, o pedido de ordem. E o próximo item é aprovar as horas de 28 de julho e 1 de setembro. Então, vamos fazer 28 de julho. Existem correções ou revisiones? Eu não ouro nada. Então, alguém gostaria de fazer uma motivação para aprovar as horas?
Esta é Susan DeRosa. Eu faço uma motivação para aprovar as horas de 28 de julho de 2020.
Esta é Anne Sharfstein. Eu segundo a motivação para fazer isso, das horas de 28 de julho.
Obrigado. Havia alguma discussão a mais? E se não houver, nós faremos uma votação de rola. Susan Valiente.
Sim.
Anne Sharfstein.
Sim.
Steve Taylor.
Sim.
Morgan Swan.
Sim.
Emma Wunsch.
Sim.
Susan DeRosa.
Sim.
E Fran Oskedell. Sim. Então, isso é aprovado. Vamos continuar aos minutos de 1 de setembro. Existem mudanças ou correções a mais? Fantástico. E eu vou fazer uma motivação para aceitar as horas como apresentadas. Susan Valiente?
Sim, eu acredito que aceitaremos as horas de 20 de setembro.
Tá. Há alguma segunda?
Eu segundo. Este é Morgan Swan.
Obrigado, Morgan. Havia alguma discussão a mais? Se não houver, vamos fazer outra votação de rola. Este é para aceitar as horas de 1 de setembro. Susan Valiente.
Sim.
E Anne Sharfstein.
Sim.
Steve Taylor?
Sim.
Morgan Swan?
Sim.
Emma Wunsch?
Sim.
Susan DeRosa?
Sim.
E Fran Oskedell. Sim. Então, essas foram aprovadas. E para o relatório financeiro. Steve.
Ok, eu enviei a todos uma cópia dos fundos operativos para a cidade e dos fundos especiais ontem. Estou começando a sentir um recorde partido. Nós, novamente, estamos perdendo nosso despesa em nossos custos de salário. Também estamos um pouco abaixo do despesa em outros custos, que é desenvolvimento de estatuto, ofertas de oficinas, publicidade, alguns desses gastos. Então, você sabe, isso é consistente com o que nós estamos fazendo ano a ano para ambos julho e agosto. Eu acho que tínhamos um grupo que conversou sobre algumas maneiras de gastar os fundos de sobra que estávamos acumulando, e eu acho que o Sean está trabalhando em tentar fazer alguns desses projetos feitos antes do final do ano, então nós trabalhamos com o sobra. Fundos especiais, os custos e pós... Desculpe, os custos e pós estão baixos devido à fechamento do edifício. E então estamos indo abaixo do despesa nesse área, mas ainda estamos conseguindo mostrar um pequeno sobra ano a ano. Nós não recebemos nossos... Nossos fundos da Fundação para o Anual Apelão, mas eu acho que isso está em processo. Sean, corriga-me se estou errado.
Olá, esse é o Sean. Então, bem, neste ponto, eu não sei se vamos realmente gastar os fundos nisso. Nós tomamos... Nós parámos o pagamento por alguns meses pelo menos. E eu não sei se vamos mesmo conseguir manter a velocidade com o que nosso despesa normal seria. Amy poderia falar sobre isso, mas nós discutimos o quanto nossa capacidade é para até processar os livros. Então, acho que isso pode ser um bom assunto de discussão para nossa reunião conjunta, que eu vou falar sobre isso mais tarde nesta reunião. Mas talvez Amy pudesse apenas tocar no... O que o pagamento é. Eu não acho que falamos por algumas semanas sobre isso.
O pagamento, você sabe... Você pode me ouvir? Eu quero ter certeza de que estou sem muted. Sim. Então, esta é Amy Lappin, a diretora de deputada. Nós estamos... Nós estamos pagando, mas estamos limitados porque só temos duas pessoas na biblioteca para processar materiais, então eu parei de pagar novamente para evitar que eles se encaixem. Eu estou reunindo esta semana com os membros do nosso time de serviços tecnológicos para descobrir. Eu acho que a melhor forma de ir para frente é pegar alguns de nossos itens pré-processados por Baker e Taylor. Nós definitivamente não vamos gastar 100% do nosso despesa. Seremos capazes de gastar 75%? Provavelmente, sim. Mas estamos apenas olhando como fazer. É apenas uma questão de estafagem neste momento.
Eu acho que o último que eu apenas queria dizer é que vocês notará que nós tivemos $40,200 que vieram como rendimento de graça, que imediatamente se torna e volta. Isso é para um projeto que Chuck está trabalhando com alguns outros bibliotecas no nordeste. E então, isso é realmente apenas... Nós aplicamos para o graça e o recebemos, mas o tornamos para as pessoas que estão fazendo a maior parte do trabalho. Então, e isso é, eu acho, uma vez por ano para nós. Este é o segundo ano. Então, eu acho que é uma rápida resumida. Se alguém tem perguntas, estou feliz em responder-lhe. Mas novamente, eu sinto que estou ficando bastante cansado apresentando a mesma coisa, então... Todos vão dormir agora, Fran.
Quando se trata dos financiais, eu acho que o cansar pode ser bom.
Sim, é algo positivo. Tudo bem. Se não há itens ou perguntas a discutir, deixa eu pedir uma motivação para aprovar o relatório financeiro apresentado.
Esta é Anne Sharfstein. Eu acredito que aceite aquele relatório financeiro como foi apresentado.
Há alguma segunda?
Esta é Susan DeRosa. Eu segundo a motivação.
Obrigado. Há alguma discussão a mais? Se não houver, vamos fazer uma votação de rola. Susan Valiente.
Sim.
Anne Sharfstein.
Sim.
Steve Taylor.
Sim.
Morgan Swan.
Sim.
Emma Wunsch.
Sim.
Susan DeRosa.
Sim.
E Fran Oskedell. Sim. Então, isso é aprovado. O próximo item é a aposta de candidatos de trustee alternativo. E nós tivemos duas pessoas sentadas na nossa última reunião, Donna Hartford e Nancy Fontaine. Ambas deles... Ambas tinham declarações, declarações curtas escritas para nós. No intervalo, Nancy foi retirada. Donna ainda está interessada. E então poderíamos discutir a candidatura para a posição alternativa. Alguém tem qualquer comentários?
Esta é Susan Valiente. Eu conheci Donna por muitos anos e acho que seria uma excelente candidata para ser alternativa. Eu não sei onde ela está no processo de ter uma aplicação através do prédio de clã da cidade e depois ir para o conselho de cidadãos representantes para entrevistar ela e o resto das opções ainda, ou o resto do processo ainda. Mas eu sou seguro de que ela seria uma excelente candidata.
Eu posso dizer que eu tive um e-mail de Donna hoje e ela estava... Ela pode ter submetido o formulado hoje. Havia um pouco de mistura na minha parte em enviar ela. Ela recentemente retirou-se de DHMC, e então eu estava perguntando... Ela me pediu de usar seu e-mail Gmail e eu não tinha ele. E ela continua enviando meus e-mails de sua conta Hitchcock. Então, eu respondi a ela na sua conta Hitchcock e ela não encontrou meus e-mails por muito tempo. Então, ela falou com o prédio de clã hoje. Ela é capaz de completar o formulado online, e ela pode ter feito isso hoje ou ela fará isso amanhã. Então, ela é definitivamente interessada em se juntar a nós. E eu conheci Donna por muito tempo também. E eu sei que ela faz... Ela tem voluntariado ou ela está voluntariando. Por exemplo, ela atualmente é voluntária no board CCBA e ela tem estado com eles por vários anos. Então, ela tem envolvimento com a comunidade. Ela é uma pessoa muito boa. Ela é uma pessoa muito boa, eu acho. Então, eu certamente gostaria de ver ela se juntar ao grupo. Alguém mais gostaria de dizer algo? Se não houver, vamos fazer uma votação de rola nisso? Acho que devemos. E então nós... E a votação para nós para frente aqui seria apresentar sua nome para o conselho de cidadãos. E eu acho que a partir desse ponto, o conselho de cidadãos contactaria ela para entrevistar. É assim que vai, Sean?
Isso é correto, sim.
Ok, então, se alguém tem algo mais que eles gostariam de dizer ou perguntar, vamos fazer uma votação. Então, em favor de ter Donna Hartford se juntar a nós como trustee alternativo, Susan Valiente.
Sim.
Anne Sharfstein.
Sim.
Steve Taylor.
Sim.
Morgan Swan.
Sim.
Emma Wunsch.
Sim.
E Susan DeRosa.
Sim.
E Fran Oskedell. Sim. Ok, então eu vou notificar... Eu posso notificar Donna. E Sean, você... Ou sim, você notifica o prédio de clã e eles vão lá e pegar o conselho de cidadãos?
Sim, eu já coloquei no meu calendário amanhã para deixar o prédio de clã.
Ok, tudo bem. Ok, então agora estamos no item seis. Aprovado, revisado, política de referência.
Fran, eu... Fran, onde está o... Eu estou olhando minha própria cópia do agenda. Onde está o... Onde está a reabertura nisso?
Oh, eu tenho razão. Eu transpostei coisas na minha... Eu escrevi tudo porque eu não posso... Eu não posso imprimir nada. Eu estou em um apartamento em Vancouver, então eu transpostei coisas. Obrigado. A partir desse ponto, devemos rever o plano de reabertura do COVID-19, ou plano de transição.
Você está bem comigo falando neste ponto, Fran?
Absolutamente, claro.
Ok, então eu gostaria de apenas dar uma visão geral de onde estão as coisas no estado de New Hampshire com bibliotecas que são comparavelmente grandes do Lebanon. E então eu gostaria de discutir o que é... Briefo o que está acontecendo no Vale do Sul também com apenas algumas bibliotecas. E então falar sobre Lebanon em particular. Então, nós juntamos um consórcio chamado Urbans, que são bibliotecas de nossa tamanho, ou realmente maiores. Nós somos apenas a fazer a parte de corte. Eles mudaram a parte de população. Então, 13.000 e maiores são considerados uma biblioteca urbana. Então, as principais bibliotecas de nossa tamanho estão novamente abertas ao público. Então, Concorde, Laconia, Keene, Portsmouth, Bedford, Hookset. As pessoas que estão atendendo estas reuniões, elas estão abertas. Há alguns no grupo que não estão abertos, mas nós não os estamos vendo. Alguns já foram abertos por meses. Dover, eu acho, abriu em junho. Nós temos, na verdade, dois novos diretores de biblioteca que começaram desde o início do COVID. E eles são novos em suas posições. Deve ser bastante difícil. Mas todos têm limites em quanto são abertos realmente. Então, eles estão cobrando, para a maior parte, eles estão cobrando o número de pessoas permitidas no edifício. Eu acho que, na verdade, todas estas diretores de biblioteca que eu vi na última reunião, no dia de quinta-feira, nós tivemos 10 atendidos. Eles todos estão cobrando o número de pessoas que são permitidas em um número bastante baixo. Mas eles estão informando que eles realmente não estão vendo pessoas, mesmo se eles são esses números. Eles não estão tendo que virar as pessoas. Porque as pessoas estão realmente self-selecting para não ir em lugares públicos. Então, eles estão testemunhando coisas como... Eu conheço Randy Bro de Laconia, que tem sido diretor lá por décadas. Ele conhece seu sistema como o pé de madeira. Geralmente, quando eles estavam fechados, eles tinham cerca de 10 computadores e eles teriam que perguntar, você sabe, eles teriam que pedir para as pessoas mudarem. E quando eles estavam fechando, seus computadores estavam cheios. E hoje em dia, há apenas uma ou duas pessoas nos computadores em tempo de fechamento, então é tranquilo. Então, isso é o que estamos vendo no estado de New Hampshire. Localmente, no Vale do Sul, eu tenho estado em contato com a Ruby Simon, a diretora da How Library. How ainda está fechado. Eles têm um número de pessoas no edifício. Eles estão fazendo listas de contatos como nós. E Ruby informa que Hanover não tem... Não tem data para reabrir suas unidades públicas. Eles todos vão estar em lockstep. E como eu entendo, seu selecional board é muito ciente das implicações públicas de reabertura de seus edifícios. Então, eles não têm data fixa neste momento. No Lebanon, Sean Maholland, o gerente de cidadãos, está olhando cada edifício de forma case a case, o que provavelmente é wise. Como a sede de cidadãos, por exemplo, agora eles realmente têm uma ventilação muito pobre que é próxima do público. Eles vão voltar para a rede renovada na sede de cidadãos no dia 16 de novembro. E eles terão um sistema de HVAC atualizado que circula ar, glas que vai separar o público da equipe de estatuto. Eu acho que isso era mais um tipo de problema de segurança pública. Parece que é como um banco, eu acho, em áreas urbanas, é a impressão que eu estou recebendo. Mas eles realmente vão ser separados do público. Mas, você sabe, você tem outros departamentos na cidade, como RECC, que é habitado no edifício da Community College do Vale do Sul. Então, eles podem apenas reabrir quando o colégio faz. O PD, vocês podem só ir no lobby, esse edifício tem sido aberto por um tempo. Eu recentemente estava no edifício administrado de trabalho público para uma reunião, e isso é próximo do público. E então eu perguntei ao Jim Donison, o diretor lá, quando ele planeja reabrir. Ele preferiria nunca reabrir para o público mais uma vez. Eu não sei se isso é principalmente do COVID, mas eu acho que neste momento é uma boa medida do COVID. Mas eu só queria... Acho que eu reitero, eu acho que algo que nós falamos antes. Nós não vamos todos estar em lockstep, e vocês, como o board, têm que decidir quando reabrimos. Então, nós preferiríamos não abrir. Eu vou cobrir nosso plano de reabertura. Nós preferiríamos não reabrir a Biblioteca do Lebanon até que as renovações se完成. Então, não haja ar outdoor introduzido com o sistema de HVAC atual durante os meses de inverno. Espero que a construção, se o CIP for passada, começará em janeiro. Então, você sabe, estamos esperando que se reabrissem, nós teríamos que fechar de qualquer maneira. E com não haver ar circulando durante o inverno, você obtém ar nos outdoors durante o verão com o ar condicionado. Não parece uma boa ideia abrir a Biblioteca do Lebanon em breve. Olhando para as opções para reabertura, nós olhamos para a opção A e B na nossa última reunião ou na reunião anterior, eu não me lembro qual. Mas, de qualquer maneira, a opção A é o laboratório de tecnologia exterior basicamente criado em casa para a sala de comunidade. A opção B é abrir toda a biblioteca. A opção C é o laboratório de tecnologia exterior criado em casa na sala de comunidade mais navegando nessa sala. Eu recomendo que quando você escolher um plano, nós escolhamos a opção C. Então, não abrir todo o edifício para o público, mas fazer algum navegando possível. Eu sei que isso é riscado mais do que apenas fazer computadores disponíveis. Mas desses diretores de biblioteca que estavam falando de ter reabrido, nenhum deles está apenas fazendo computadores disponíveis. Eles também estão fazendo parte deles, pelo menos parte de sua coleção disponível. Isso faria apenas... Isso faria disponível apenas uma fração de nossa coleção, mas a maioria do que circula são novos materiais nas bibliotecas, publicas, de qualquer maneira. As pessoas querem ler o último James Patterson War and Peace, geralmente. E nós poderíamos pegar livros para as pessoas que os querem. Então, se as pessoas fossem restritas a uma determinada área da biblioteca, seria como se fosse com stacks fechadas. E, na verdade, como ainda é em algumas bibliotecas com stacks fechadas. A Biblioteca Concorde tem uma rede de armazenamento em seu basemento que o público não é permitido entrar, e eles têm que pegar livros para as pessoas lá. Então, nós poderíamos ir por essa rotura se vocês escolhessem fazer isso. Nós queremos navegar por apoiamento primeiro. Navegar por apoiamento primeiro. O número de pessoas permitidas no espaço e o tempo seria determinado por equipe. Eu não acho que nós colocamos em nosso plano nenhum tipo de números lá. Nós queríamos dar a nós mesmos flexibilidade para responder para ver como estava funcionando se nós fizermos isso. Então, há uma questão de escolher o plano, e então há a questão também de quando reabrimos. Então, novamente, eu tenho estado em contato com membros da equipe de equipe. E alguns de nossos membros de equipe não seriam programados para mesas públicas. Então, nossos... Dois de nossos assistentes que fazem o processamento, que a Amy estava apenas referindo, eles não têm tempo de trabalhar nas mesas públicas. Então, eu perguntei a eles sobre o nível de conforto com a reabertura. E eles não... Esses dois não tinham nenhuma opinião sobre... Em favor de reabertura. E ainda com nosso equipe, a maioria de nossos membros de equipe quer ficar próximo do público ainda. Então, você sabe, ouvindo as pessoas sobre isso. Nós estamos divididos, igual a este board tem opiniões diferentes sobre o assunto. Nós temos membros de nosso equipe que teriam querido abrir um tempo atrás. Você sabe, pelo menos em julho é quando nós começamos a ouvir sobre isso. A mesma coisa está acontecendo em How. Os bibliotecas querem reabrir lá. Eles estão pressionando o diretor. Eu não posso realmente classificar o que é mais importante para mim: a segurança pública, a segurança de nossos usuários de biblioteca ou nosso equipe. Mas eu concordo, eu tenho que concordar que eu tenho preocupações com ficar... Com reabertura e ter pessoas no edifício. Para mim, a segurança pública é uma grande parte disso. É algo que sempre foi parte da minha vida crescendo. Morgan, eu acho que realmente falou sobre isso na nossa última reunião. É importante. E as pessoas estão... As pessoas estão tendo, enquanto nós temos por um tempo, a fatiga do COVID. E as pessoas estão preocupadas com como as pessoas agirão se forem levadas no edifício. Will elas manter suas máscaras? Mesmo se você tiver máscaras, quanto efetivas são? Eu tenho que dizer, de um ponto de vista pessoal ou experiência pessoal, eu sinto muito, hoje em dia, na última minuta, eu estava com um contratante em Kilton e ele está nos dando uma citação sobre algum trabalho elétrico. E nós nos envolvemos em uma discussão sobre o... Sobre o coronavírus e quanto é perigoso. Nós dissemos que eles tinham que usar uma máscara quando entravam no edifício. E cerca de 10 minutos depois de nós entrarmos no edifício, ele estava olhando os suportes e, você sabe, discutindo nossas opções, ele tirou sua máscara para escrever sua citação, que eu podia ouvir ele bem através da máscara. Então, isso é apenas uma anécdota, comparada a, eu seguro, todas as coisas que nós todos lemos ou ouvimos sobre este pandemia. Mas eu gostaria de ouvir do board. Eu sei que... I know that, I know that I think pretty much everybody has expressed an opinion about reopening at one point or another. But opinions can change. And I think at this point, it's time for me to stop talking and for me to listen to you.
I would, I would, this is Fran Oskedel. So what we're, we're talking about moving from phase three to phase four. And in phase four, we have within the transition plan, options A, B, and C. I have a question about option C. If we move the tech lab computers indoors and we move them into the community room. If we went to option C and we added both the computers and some books for browsing, would there be enough space for, is there enough space for both? And if we allow a certain level of browsing for books, would we also be willing to or feel compelled to retrieve issues of periodicals and newspapers for people? And if we do that, is there room for people to sit around and read those materials on site?
So Fran, this, this is Amy and we've, we think there is room. Depending on, we have a meeting scheduled to really look at the space. We definitely have schedules prepared. I mean, I'd prefer, I personally would prefer we didn't reopen, but I definitely have a plan to do it. And we can do it fairly quickly. Once you decide, once this board decides what they want us to do. We would look at that. We would look at the number of computers we could have and the space that the browsing would take up. We could use all the way up to where the coffee door is. I mean, we could create a decent size for, for browsing. That would definitely inform the number of people we decided should, could come into the building. It would inform the number of people we would let use computers. So I think we, we could do it. It would just be a balance. We would, we've talked about getting our magazines and our newspapers out there for people. But you're right, where could, where could they read them? I don't think the idea behind option C was that people would hang out. I think it's kind of come into your business and get out. Could people go look at the newspaper in their car? Sure. And, but I, I don't know how we would handle the newspapers, but magazines people can check out for two weeks. So if they were to do that and take a magazine, they, they could, you know, they'd be welcome to do that. I think we would have some in the browsing options.
Other comments?
This is Anne Charfstein. So Lebanon schools have been open on a hybrid model. This is the fourth week. And it's been surprisingly successful. I work at the high school. We have zero mask problems. Everyone comes in masked. I have had no problems with kids being unwilling to wear one or defiant. I mean, obviously in every population, there are exceptions. But the expectations, you know, are clear. If you come into our school, you wear a mask. And we haven't had any problems. I think if the expectations are, if you come to the library for your twenty minute book browsing appointment, that you wear your mask for that length of appointment. You browse your books, you enjoy your time, and then your appointment is over.
Anne, this is Susan Valiente. And how many people are allowed in the library at a time for those twenty minute appointments?
Oh, at the high school library, and we're like, we just, someone stands at the door. And if, and just counts the kids so they can come in and come out. So if they're not, you know, if they go in, grab their book, check it out and leave, they're not really there for twenty minutes. They're there for five minutes and then someone else can come in. We're letting five kids plus the librarians be in the space at once. But it doesn't seem like, that seems fine. There's not like a long line or something wait that out the door. The high school librarians are also delivering books to kids in their classrooms if students want a book and either don't have time to browse the school library or don't want to.
Thank you.
Susan DeRocher.
We also have been open for four weeks and hybrid and going into full time by the end of the month. And I had my first library class today. We haven't been in the library, our kids, yet because we are, they're still young and, and not, we're not really sure how that's going to work in the library. The librarian came into the room today and read, took the kids outside, read a story outside, then had brought in a whole cart full of books, set them out for the kids to choose books. They each got to choose a book, two books actually. And then what they do is they quarantine the books when they come back in a tub for, I think, like three days, three or four days. They sit there. So it's working out really well for us. And I do like option C, Sean. I'm glad we agreed on that one. So I would vote for that. Now I take my hand down. Emma has her hand up.
I just had a question for Sean about the other libraries that have been open. Have there been any problems, the comparable libraries that have been open? That you know of?
So, yeah, a few of the library directors, so the one that I'm remembering, you know, at the top of my head is, is Manchester City Library, where they have had people who have refused the mask when they come in the door. And so they've just asked them to leave. So what I would want to do is if, if patrons did refuse a mask, tell them that we could serve them outside the library. From what I've read online of other libraries where they have had those issues and they say, well, we can always bring books to you outdoors, then that's worked. But if people did refuse to leave, then they would, my inclination would be to trespass them. Because they're actually not, they would not be abiding by the rules of the library. So I would hope I wouldn't have to do that. Some library directors, I know Randy Bro in Laconia is, they're not actually making people wear masks. So they're strongly recommending them. Some people are coming into the library unmasked.
Well, Lebanon has a mask ordinance, right? So it's.
The mask ordinance is incredibly watered down. If you watch a city council meeting or even just, so I attended a planning board meeting at City Hall because initially attendance was mandatory that you be there. And I just wanted to be there because it was a capital improvement project, discussion about the Lebanon Library. So there were seven or eight people in the room, almost no air circulation. It's, you know, one of the, it's the Whipple building. And nobody was wearing masks after four, ten minutes. So the way that the ordinance, the mask ordinance reads, it says if you can't maintain six feet of distance, then you have to wear a mask. So if you're six feet away, you don't have to wear a mask. We had a department head meeting in which there were four department heads, I think, actually including Sean, city manager there. Paul Coats was wearing a mask at a six foot folding table and Sean was not wearing a mask. And David Brooks has had pulled, his planning director pulled Donna off of his nose. So that, that ordinance is too weak. I would want in the public spaces, everybody to be required to wear a mask. And that's why our reopening plan has the language in place as it does.
This is Fran Oskedel. And there was a letter at some point to the Valley News. It may have been the day after or two days after that ordinance came, came about, pointing out several weaknesses in the ordinance. So it would be up to the library, I think, to enforce a mask rule. You can rely somewhat on the ignorance of people having closely read the ordinance or the rule. But as Sean said, there are loopholes.
I, I support the library doing it. I mean, that's how the schools are doing it, right? You have to wear a mask in school.
Right. So right, the schools have said as long as you are inside the building, you have, you have to wear a mask. The only exception is teachers alone in their classroom. So if I am alone in my classroom during my prep period, I am permitted to remove my mask. Other than that, if you are indoors, you are wearing a mask no matter how near or far you are from another person.
This is Fran Oskedel again. As the weather changes as the year moves on, we have our library tech, our computer tech lab outdoors. And if we're going to continue offering computer access, we're going to have to bring it indoors. And so that alone, I think, will take us at some point to phase four. When we choose to do that is part of the discussion tonight. So it seems to me that by November or sometime in November, at the latest, I think we've been very fortunate with the weather this fall. It's, I hear from Joanne that it's beautiful every day, although rain is coming, I guess, tonight, maybe tomorrow. But soon we'll be taking these computers indoors. And if we expect to maintain that access, we will have moved on to phase four. So I think within phase four, it's a matter of when and which of these options we're going to choose.
So I saw Morgan at his hand up. Do you mind if I speak real, really quickly, Morgan, to that point?
Not at all.
So this is Sean. So it's been interesting to talk to Jack, sorry, Jackie and Chuck about the actual use of that tech lab. People have not really needed to use the devices so much as they have been getting some support from the library staff. So yeah, it's more actually a service as far as helping people work their own way, work their way through troubles with their devices than it is actually providing two people with a bit of a surprise. Thank you, Morgan.
Sure, no problem. Hi, this is Morgan Swan. You may remember me from last meeting. I have many thoughts. I'm pretty sure a lot of the library staff are not super comfortable with going with option four C. Sean, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But I, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm curious about, Sean, I'm curious about if, if you say that that's, if what you say is true about, you know, the kinds of access and kinds of help that people are needing with technology. Is that something that, say Chuck or other people could provide remotely via Zoom or screen share or something like that without needing to expose staff unnecessarily, especially moving into the winter months? When you're, everyone's sort of inside the building together?
Yeah. So this is Sean. Getting on Zoom might be the issue. You know, so people are, I think probably we could provide some of those services online. But people do, I think there is something, we would be missing something if we weren't providing that, that service. Just like we are, we are missing certain things that, that we typically provide when we're not in the midst of a pandemic, right? Children's program.
No, I'm sure that, that makes sense. Yeah, I, I would just, I would just add to like, I mean, I appreciate the fact that public schools and public school libraries are back doing their thing. And I think that's awesome. I think, I think kids need access to those resources. At the same time, I feel like there's a bit of an apples in the situation. The population in the community of a public school is fairly sort of a finite known quantity. So if there are outbreaks or things like that, contact tracing and that sort of thing is super easy to implement. Whereas a public library, there is no way to know who comes in, who has what and where they go. And so there's a lot more interaction with the general public, I think, in a public library sitting, setting than there is in a high school, middle school, elementary school setting. And that's not to say that, that it's more dangerous, but it, it's, it's, you're less able to control a situation or to, to manage a situation if people become infected, if there is an outbreak. And, and I get the fact that, I'll just say, I get the fact that like, you know, it's getting colder, sure. But at the same time, like, I'm, I'm not comfortable jeopardizing the health of the library staff just because people are cold. And, and that's my, my concern is, you know, Dartmouth students have just come out of quarantine. We're going to have two weeks before we have any clue whether or not they're bringing all kinds of nasty stuff. And we've already had several positive cases. And, and I.
No!
What? Was that for me or, or for a cat or?
Sorry, no, that was, that was my children and ice cream. Sorry.
Oh, okay. No, I, I recognize that tone. I think I've used that tone myself today at least three times. Yeah. So I, I, I don't know. I feel like I would be provisionally open to some kind of phase four implementation later in the month. And I think that, that the Lebanon schools are going to full days on the twenty sixth. But I'm not comfortable with doing more than, than the phase A because I don't see how B or C have any value added other than sort of giving people, like they don't need to browse. They might need help with their tech, but I can't, I can't see any justification that, or any argument that would say it's worth risking library staff health so people can wander through the stacks. Sorry, that was a ramble, but that's my, my take on it.
Anne Charfstein.
Hi, yeah. In regards to what Morgan said about contact tracing, I was sort of, and maybe this is a completely wrong assumption. I was sort of assuming that if people made appointments to come in to look at the small selection of browsing books, that, that we would know who the people were because they made an appointment. And then we would be able to contact them. And we would be, if we were contacted by the Department of Health, like if the library was contacted and they said, this person told us we were in the library, you would know who the people were because they made an appointment. I've been asked to give my name and phone number to attend my child's outdoor sporting event. I've been asked to give my name and phone number when I went to have a drink at the Hanover Inn outdoor terrace. People are accustomed now to be giving their name and contact information. And, and I sort of just assumed that we would do that. I will say, I don't know, maybe younger children are different, but I don't think that a high school population is a closed or finite population at all. The, yes, the students enrolled in high school are a finite population, but they're, they're working at jobs. I mean, fifty percent of kids in the, in eleventh and twelfth grade have an out of school job. They're playing on sports teams that include kids from like travel hockey teams. They're involved in all kinds of things that make them a non-closed finite population. So I don't think that's a hundred percent accurate. But I do assume that if you're, if we're going to let people in, we're going to keep a record of who the people are.
And, and see, that's, that's why, sorry, this is Morgan again, not to cut you off, Anne, but this is where I jump in and say like, the point of the contact tracing is not that, that they're not, that high school students are not interacting with people outside the high school. It's that if an outbreak occurs within the high school, then we are able to know, okay, it started with this person. We know who, who this person is and they are infecting the entire high school. Whereas I don't, I don't know, Sean, Amy, you can correct me on this if I'm wrong. But I feel like there is a certain level of privacy of issues like that, that we can't say, oh, we're keeping a list of who was here and what they looked at and when they were here. And then we're just going to distribute that to whatever public, you know, authority requests it. Maybe that's my misunderstanding, but I feel like part of the whole point, the tour, the whole tour debate was because we're not going to let federal agencies or even state agencies know who was.
This is Amy. I'd love to, I'd love to speak to that. The plan is not, at least the plan in my mind and the plan on that I've made is not. And to make, to make appointments for people, we'd be open three days a week for certain periods and, and let a certain number of people in. People, you know, we talked, I know at the last meeting about a real concern being for people who don't have access to computers and, and sometimes to phones to make, you know, the people we're really worried about are the people who, who really can't make an appointment to browse or, or to get access to information or need to come into the technology. So we would just be open on a, on a first come, first served basis. We had not talked at all about contact tracing. In fact, I think when we did talk about it, the last time we talked, we did have spoken about it, obviously during, during the shutdown. It does make, I know it makes me nervous. I think part of coming to the library for information is sometimes that you don't need people to know where you were or that you were there. So our plan has not been that we would take people's names and phone numbers. A lot of our patrons don't have an address. The patrons I'm mostly concerned about don't have an address. The ones who certainly miss coming in to use some of our, our, our resources. So, you know, I don't know that we would ever find out who had brought COVID in or who else had been around at the exact time that they were there. I think the best we could do was if we became aware of a case, we could say that we were, we are aware that somebody had COVID when we were in the building. But, but the plan, and Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but was not, not to keep any log or any record of the, of who was in the building. You know, I know that, yeah.
Jump in actually right now. So yeah, I agree with you. So this is Sean. I agree with you that we hadn't talked about keeping a log, but we actually have in our plan that it would be by appointment.
Okay.
Yeah, but we could, that could be changed.
Yeah, I don't know how that would, how well that would work. I think we'd be awfully, awfully slow if we only had it by appointment. I, I think it would be good to let, if we're slow, to let more people in. And we do have so many people who just really, the, the odds of them making an appointment are, are, are low in some cases. I also don't want to make a lot of appointments and not have people come when someone else could be using it. But I'm sorry, I missed that part of it. I didn't realize that we had done that. And we can, we can look further at that. I just guess while, while I have the microphone, what I'm hearing from staff, I think if we could be guaranteed that things in the Upper Valley were going to be going along as they're going along now, I think people would probably feel a lot more comfortable about it. I think moving us inside, moving patrons inside, having elections in the building the first week of November in that space, having the schools open five days a week and not having a lot of data on that is, is making people nervous. So I, I would ask you, when you think about the date we might reopen, to keep some of that in mind. You know, the data is good. I'm glad it's, it's good. But, but that's what I hear from staff, that they're most nervous about. Okay, it's all going along well, but you know, fall is here, so. I'll mute now.
This is Sean. I did, I did want to address one thing that you said, Morgan. So in talking to all of our staff, the main concern, the concern everybody had was with opening the entire building. So nobody was in favor of doing that. So that's, that's the option of just opening the entire building, I think, would be by, by appointment as well. People did not say anything actually about objecting to the plans, C, option C, and having the browsing in the community room. And I asked people specifically about that. It really was the, the access to the entire building that was concerning to, to staff. And that's presenting the options to them, discussing the fact that if you had to choose among these options, which would you choose? And then it's a separate question about when you would choose to implement that, right? So.
Hi, everyone. I don't know if you can hear me. This is Laura Bear. I just joined by phone and I just wanted to let you know I'm here. And I'll just listen to, apologize for being so late.
Thank you, Laura. This is Fran Oskedel. I've been very, thinking very cautiously in terms of reopening. But in listening to this discussion, I think it's, we're going to have, I, I think we should be able to continue offering the computer assistance. And I think it ought to be available in person. I personally have a computer problem from where I'm sitting. And I can't solve it without being in a room with an IT person. So I think we need to move that indoors. We'll have to do that eventually. And I also think we should have people visit by appointment. I think if the, the space is not full and people show up without an appointment, they could make an appointment in real time and sign in, in a book. I think during this period, in terms of public safety, people are going to have to sacrifice a bit of privacy. Going to keep our staff and other people safe, I think having login, people login is a low level loss of privacy. And we may never, ever have to do contact tracing. But in case we do, I think the information ought to be available to us. So where I was very cautious in the past, I'm now leaning towards Phase Four, option C. I don't think we should do this before, or before the election occurs. I don't think the library should reopen to people's appointments until after that election. I think we should wait to see what full school reopening might lead to. And that's going to happen shortly, I gather. And so by the end of this month, I handle on how comfortable we might be as to going forward and allowing people in the building. As I said earlier, I do think it's going to have to occur if we intend to offer computer assistance. Amy has the hand up. And so Amy, why don't you go next?
Oh, I just never lowered my hand from the last time it was up. I'll lower that now. Thanks.
All right. Susan Valiente.
Yes, Fran, I agree with you. And in regards to the appointments and contact tracing, I've been asking people in the community what they think about how the library should open. And almost to a T, people have thought that appointments and also signing in was very important. So I think that people are looking at this differently. And I understand the privacy issue. But I also understand that other people wouldn't feel comfortable with that. So I really think that we should have appointments and we should have a sign in so we can find out who's there with, you know, a phone number or an email. And I'm wondering about if we should consider the amount of time people can spend in the library because that would limit the number of people who would have access to browsing in the community room. And I haven't heard anything about that.
Anne Sharstein has her hand raised.
Oh, I, I just wanted to, to ask if it was okay if I left at 8:00 PM. I don't want to mess up voting. Do we have enough people? Is it okay if I leave in a few minutes?
Yes, we do have enough people.
Okay. I'm going to stay as long as I can, but I'm def, I mean, I can see that we're not almost done. Thank you.
There's no way.
This is Sean.
Oh, sorry.
So I'd like to speak, Susan Valiente, to the point you just made. So the plan actually does, it says, so the public will be allowed to use the library by appointment, appointment only. This is option C. There'll be allotted time allowed, a number of people in the building to be determined by library administration. That would typically, typically be Amy and I, but it would be more people than that. So we would, I think at one point, we did discuss a half hour would be probably where we would start. I think we wrote that into a draft of the plan, but then we wanted to give ourselves some flexibility about that. So we would only allow people in for, you know, for, I guess, probably start off with a half hour. Maybe it would be longer, maybe it might be shorter. I've heard, you know, different numbers bandied about tonight and also during these Herdens meetings. So yeah, we would restrict that.
And Sean, this is Amy. You're right. This, the whole appointment thing's coming back to me now. Because I think what our staff, when we talked about it, the people I talked about it with thought, making it very simple, like you have an appointment, appointments on the half hour, not like, oh, and then we can work someone in, not like doing seating at a restroom where, oh, at 12:15, we could take another person just to keep it sane. But I do remember the appointment idea now. So I apologize for not earlier.
Okay, Morgan?
Yeah, thank you. Sean, Sean, Amy, could you maybe explain to me the difference, like the major differences between options A and C? Because I, I, I'm not, I guess I'm not, I'm not sure what it means if there, if public services are available but in the, in checking out and that kind of thing, but only in the community room? Does that mean that people will get to like wander into the stacks and grab stuff, but then they'll bring it back to the community room to check out? Or, or how, how is that, how does that work?
So no, Morgan, that would be, it would be very limited. And there would be, the schedule I have right now would have three people working the community room, one doing computers, one greeting and sort of enforcing it all, and another helping with circulation. And that's how it would start. Would we need all of those people? I don't know. But the idea is that patrons themselves would only, patrons would only be in the community room area. We would have some limited browsing set up there. But if you came in and whatever the book you're looking for is not in the, on display, we have people who will go and, and get that for you. But no, patrons would not be in the library past, let's say, the coffee bar doors. They also would not be in the bathrooms in this plan.
So, so would this, sorry, it's a follow-up question. I know that people, other people have their hands up. So. So how, how, how does this improve things or add to services? I guess, I guess my question is like, can't they just request the items online and then we continue to do what we have been doing? Like maybe have a, have the cart in, in the lobby, you know, so it's not in the weather, but like, you know, the pickup, remote pickup cart? Like, how is this adding anything that justifies endangering the library staff simply so that someone can have like a person-to-person connection? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not trying to be cynical. I'm just, I'm confused.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. I, I don't think you're, I mean, I'm a little cynical about it myself, but, but, you know, but I'm ready to do it if, if, if that's what the board decides. But it's just giving people more to browse. I mean, that's really it. And then the computer aspect of it, because weather is coming in, and the only real way to keep the computer tech lab going is to move it indoors. But if we're going to move it indoors, we may as well have more that people can take a look at. So if you have a cart of brand new fiction, brand new nonfiction, brand new kid stuff, brand new YA stuff, so people could at least see those things. But while they're in, you know, they're not limited. We're not going to make them. We would also do contact free pickup at the same time. The idea is just there's less cleaning to do. If we let people come into the whole library, that's an awful lot more cleaning. And we, we can't really control where people are and what they're touching and what they're doing.
So can I speak to that point? This is Sean. Morgan, or did you want to jump in, Anne, before you, before you left? I see your hands, hand is risen.
Yeah, I, I do have to go in like a minute, but I think the value added is that people, I know people want to look at an assortment of books. I think that's what a lot of people love about a library, is that it's a place where you can go and look at an assortment of books and choose one that is appealing. Yes, I know if you know there's a book you like, you can request it and we'll put it in a bag and you can get it on a cart. And that's an awesome service that we, that many people love. But I think people are really missing the opportunity to look at books and, and choose one. And if the community room is open and it is being staffed and people can come in to get computer help, I don't think it changes the risk if some of the people coming in are looking at a cart of books instead of getting computer help. So that's why I am in favor of C, but unfortunately I won't get to vote because I have to leave. So I'm really sorry, you guys.
Bye, Anne.
So long, Anne. Thank you.
So can I, can I speak to this point just quickly?
Yes.
This is Sean. So I think that people do miss the serendipitous nature of just finding something in the stacks, Morgan. I'm going to create an analogy with my in-laws. I'm shopping for my mother-in-law, my father-in-law. My father-in-law doesn't care what he gets. My mother-in-law does. She enjoys the process of shopping. And she just told me last weekend, she really misses, she's getting everything on her list. But when she goes shopping, she gets everything on her list, but then she finds something in this, in the aisles that she really wants to grab and she's able to grab it. It's a different experience now. Do I value that enough to say that I think we should have people in, in the building doing that because it's worth the risk? No, I really don't. I mean, so, and, and the increased risk from my point of view is we would probably limit the number of people in the building in that space if we just had computers available and weren't making items available for people to browse. But our culture is such that people are taking those risks and even dumber risks, I'm sorry, it's not a dumb thing to browse this box, really dumb that are endangering people's lives. And that's what our American culture is like. 200,000 people have died because of this, because people can't put on masks. They want to social distance. We're seeing this, right? So that's just what's happening in public libraries when they're reopening. They're making items available. They're making things available to the, to the public because people miss it. And they're, they're willing to take that risk for themselves, for society in general. So.
This is Morgan. I, I think I'm the only one who has my hand raised, so if it's okay, I'll just respond to that. Yeah, and I think, I think for me, that's the crux of the issue is, is that it's not just about like, oh, wouldn't it be? There are things that I wish that I could do that I am not doing because of the situation. And it's not because I'm worried about me, although honestly, like, I probably check a lot of boxes in terms of like risk factors. But the reality is I'm not doing these things because I'm concerned about the impact that doing that may have on other people. And to, to be quite honest and quite blunt, I'm not willing to jeopardize the life of a library staff member who has to stand in that room just because I don't like using a computer to find something new that I want to read. Like, I feel like, I mean, I'm just going to be totally blunt. See, I think that's really shallow and I think that's really selfish. And I think that that is not considering the greater good of the community. And I, I understand the computer issue, but if, if Anne's point was that like, well, it will be the same in terms of risk if we're only going to have like one person in that room regardless of whether we're allowing browsing or computer, maybe that's, that's the same. But I'm guessing you couldn't just have that one person exposed. And I'm guessing that you would probably get a lot more people in that room or wanting to be in that room over the course of a day, even if they're not all in there at the same time than you would if people just need tech help. And so, so Sean, I, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I feel, I feel really sympathetic, I think, to what I'm hearing you saying is that I'm not sure that a desire to sort of gratify my own like comfort or my own sort of patterns of previous behavior are, are sufficient to endanger the lives of other people.
This is Fran. One of the reasons I would like to see the computer access at least remain is that, and I don't know if this would happen, it doesn't seem to be happening now. For people who don't have computer access at home, they can currently come to the library. And if we moved inside, they could continue to come to the library to use our computers to, to do the virtual browsing that we're allowing people to do at home. As I said, I don't know. It sounds like that isn't happening now. So I don't know if it would happen in the future. But that's a reason for me to consider at least moving the computers indoors and going to one aspect of Phase Four a month or six weeks from now. Susan Valiente.
Yes, I almost forgot to unmute. I think that computers can be brought in and we can do that safely, I hope. I mean, this is my view of it. But when I was at the computer lab in the summer, people were supposed to be wearing masks. Is that correct, Sean?
Yes, that is correct.
Well, they weren't. So I realize that's outside, but I really think that we have to make sure that the rules are followed then. Because that was, I mean, we were outside. I wasn't concerned. I had mine- Because that was, I mean, we were outside. I wasn't concerned. I had mine on. But there were people who, who weren't wearing them. And that would, that makes me wonder how we're going to really enforce that. I do agree that the computer should be open. And yes, they can browse whatever is in the library online. And if there's someone there to help them with that, that seems like that would be an avenue that, you know, we could pursue versus having people come in. You know, I'm always torn. I think I want this, then I hear something else, and I think, oh, wait, that's true. And then I'm, you know, I'm torn about the whole thing. But I do know, I mean, about the browsing. But I certainly think that we could bring the computers in and have some help with that. And the bathrooms would be locked. Is that correct?
That's what the policy says at the moment.
Okay, so rather than just the door being closed, okay, you know, the pull-over door.
And they'll be, this is Sean, they'll be renovating them soon anyway, so they will be unavailable. To answer your question about how we would enforce the mask policy, is I plan, I plan to be the bouncer actually and the enforcer on that. I'll be there every single day where you're open to the public, all the hours that we're open to make sure we're complying.
We've gone around and around on this now for several minutes. And unless someone has something new to add, I think we should consider taking a vote. We have three options to choose. We're talking about, we're talking about, there are four options, actually. Not moving to Phase Four, but retaining for the moment the lab outside, the computer lab outside, or moving to Phase Four with either option A, B, or C. This is another messy, messy vote in terms of how it should be organized.
Fran, didn't you at the last meeting already vote to move to Phase Four, but just with a?
Yes, I guess, most people, yes, we did, I'm sorry. So we're talking about Phase Four, A, B, and C. Should we just, just have a show of hands as to who's in favor of A or B or C? Steve has his hand up.
Yes, I'm having some real volume problems. So if I'm shouting at any of you, I apologize. But I think another important aspect of this is the date. I mean, I, I do agree that we should not do anything until after the election. And so as we're voting on A, B, or C, I think we also need to somehow put a date into that process.
I agree. Before we do that, yes, Laura, did you want to speak?
Do you mean, I don't know if there's any other Laura. I, I don't want to speak. And I have missed so much of the conversation that I don't feel I can vote. So I'm just really listening. And I, I apologize that I missed so much.
Well, I don't, personally, I, I think whether you vote to abstain or not is up to you, but I think you have a printed copy of the the options, and you've heard a fair amount of the discussion. You missed some, but not, not a lot. We have gone around a little bit. All right, so why don't we, I'll just ask for a vote on A and then B and then C unless, yes, Morgan, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, could we just quickly sort of sum up what those three options are, so no one's confused about like what those A, B, and C actually mean? I think it's, A is community access, computer tech, tech stuff only.
Morgan, let me try to do that. I wrote notes for myself because
Thank you.
I can't look at the paperwork and still look at myself, which I love looking at.
We all do, Fran, we all do.
So here's what I wrote down for option A. It's Phase Three plus computer use in the community room only. And then some of this is the same for all three. Appointments, the timeframe will be set up by the library administration, et cetera. So that's A. Phase Three plus computer use in the community room, and that's it. D is Phase Three plus computer use and browsing the stacks, checking out books in the entire building. And C is Phase Three plus computer use and browsing of books that are brought to the community room. Is that clear? And have I missed anything, Sean or Amy?
You covered it, Fran.
All right, great. Well, let's do Option B first, because from what I'm hearing, I don't know that anyone is in favor of Option B. But let me ask. And why don't you raise your hands? Or Laura, if you want to vote on this, just say something. Is anyone in favor of considering Option B? No, all right. So now let's ask about Option A, Phase Three and computer use only in the community room. So if you're in favor of Option A, raise your hand. So we have two for Option A. And for Option C, Phase Three and computer use and browsing of some books brought to the community room. I would raise my hand to that. And for that, I see four. Are there any abstentions, I should ask? Wait, now I see four, and I would be fine for Option C.
This is Laura Barrett. I, I am going to abstain, and I really feel bad about that. This is such an important issue. But I've been quite distracted dealing with my, my own policies affecting my life around COVID. Everybody's fine, but that I just feel I haven't been able to give this the attention it deserves. So if there, if I was at a tie-breaking point, I would just ask for a few minutes and then I would be prepared. But it doesn't sound like I am. So that's, that's a lengthy abstention.
Fran, Fran, I don't want to put my hand up because you're counting votes, but I did notice, this is Susan Valianti, that my hand was still up. So for Option C, I just want you to know that. I had forgotten to take it down.
So for, all right, so that should be four. So for Barbara in taking notes, I would, what I saw is that Morgan and Susan Valianti opted for Option A. Laura Barrett has abstained. And then for Option C, it's Fran Oskadell and Emma and Steve and Susan DeRozier.
I've got it.
Great. All right. We're going to count that as a roll call vote. We've got to go. So now we're moving on to.
So Fran, this is Susan DeRozier. Are we going to put a date on there for Sean's if we're all, because I would agree with you about opening up after the election. So that gives them an ex, like a month and a half.
Does, does any, does anyone not agree to our reopening sometime after November 3rd? Does anyone want to open prior to November 3rd? No. So I think we can give direction to the library administration to saying, we don't want any of this to happen until after the election on November 3rd. And in that, and in the meantime, we will see how numbers go within the community very locally and a little more broadly. Sean, do you want to say something?
Yes, I think that's a wise decision. It's something Amy and I were hoping for actually when we had a discussion planning for this meeting today. Just the logistics of putting, to setting up for the election and then taking everything down for the election. If we had to move everything, removing everything in first before then and then having to move it back, it would be a big undertaking. And we are working, planning to work with a contractor to put up some plexiglass and partitions. So, and if we plan to make movable, but also fairly substantial. So I'm glad that you're saying that. So I, as I understand it, you're giving us some flexibility as far as the date sometime after the election at this point. But we also have a trustee meeting again in the end of October, and if you want revisit this, we'll have that opportunity.
Right.
Yeah, and this, this is Amy. I just wanted to say thank you. I feel very comfortable with that plan and appreciate the, the thought and the time.
Okay, thank you all. Let's move on to approving a revised reference policy. Amy, are you going to speak to this or Sean?
This is Amy. I'm happy to speak to it, although Sean, please jump in if you'd like to. This is, this is really just one of those policies that got away from us a little bit. It had a, when we first drafted it, there, there was a point, but a lot of things became outdated quickly. When I opened it up for comment from other staff members, they had some really nice, good, good points, you know, who, who was this reference policy for? And, and how could we make it sort of tighter? And I think what they did was make it very tighter, much, very tighter? Yeah, more, more tight. And they took out a lot of the, the process. There was a lot of, it was kind of a combination of reference policy and reference procedures. And I think what I'm, we're presenting tonight is, is more on the policy side, and we've pulled out some of the procedures and just tried to make it a little less outdated. But I'm happy to answer any specific questions anyone might have about it.
This is Fran. May I, I would like to suggest
Yes.
There's a phrase that probably all of us who work in libraries have used, where we say we work on the reference desk. And I would like to suggest that we change that to work at the reference desk or on duty at the reference desk, rather than give the impression that we're sitting on the reference desk.
I kind of like that impression, though. That's funny. Yeah, absolutely. That seems like something we could, we could, a housekeeping change that we, we absolutely can make.
Or we could change it to squatting on the reference desk.
Or tap dancing, as the case may be. Yeah. Okay, yeah.
I, I actually have done that before, Amy, so.
Oh, well, there you go. Morgan says lounging and sprawling. Okay, yeah, I can make that change, Fran.
Okay. And then there are some changes that are, that's probably, you know, they're obvious in the lettering and the numbering. As you eliminate, for example, I think you eliminated number four or five, and so everything else then should move up a Roman numeral.
Yeah, I'm not sure you're seeing there. I did sort of a clean copy at some point too, where the, all of that. And I may have made mistakes in that.
So that's probably all, I mean, that's all pretty, that's all obvious.
Yeah, that I'll make sure to get, all of that gets fixed.
All right. And I know, and another thing I noticed is that a number of things that were crossed out seem to be covered or alluded to at least in other parts of the document. And so all of that made sense to me.
Good.
Are there any other comments? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve the revised reference policy?
This is Morgan Swan. I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Emma Wunsch. I'll second it.
Wonderful. If there's any, is there any further discussion? If not, let's do a roll call vote to approve the revisions, as we just discussed. Susan Valianti.
Yes.
Steve Taylor.
Yes.
Morgan Swan.
Yes.
Emma Wunsch.
Yes.
Susan DeRozier.
Yes.
Laura Barrett.
Yeah.
And Fran Oskadell, yes. And now we move to committee reports. Are there any?
We've had foundation meetings.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry, Fran. We have had foundation meetings, maybe either Morgan or Susan DeRozier's could update the group.
Well, this is Susan DeRozier. I haven't really been able to make them because the, the ones about the campaign, I haven't made those. So I can't speak to them. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm happy, this is Morgan, I'm happy to sort of, sort of give the flyover version that hopefully Sean will fill in the actual details where I get it wrong. No, I think it's been pretty, fairly productive. We just submitted a grant for the Massoma Bank Foundation to, to help fund the, the renovation for the Lebanon Library. And we're hoping, looked pretty good. We're hoping that that will go through. We've also been doing a lot of work in terms of identifying potential donors and sort of giving up responsibilities for that, as well as working really well with Heidi and, oh my gosh, I've forgotten her name. Sean, Heidi and
Angela.
Thank you, Angela, who've been very, very helpful, I think, in terms of giving us some direction, some guidance. And overall, I think, I think it's going fairly well. You know, I'm a newbie or rookie of this kind of thing. So maybe Sean, you have a better perspective on, on where we're at and where we need to be.
So are the, I haven't heard anything but good comments, positive comments about Angela and Heidi. They're doing a great job. Really, it's all good, good foundation board participation as well in this effort. So, yeah, I'm very, I'm optimistic about how things are going. I think I'd like to especially remark on our foundation treasurer, Phil Bush, who's really been actually suggesting that we contact certain individuals or organizations, keeping the process going too, as far as writing the applications. He's been really instrumental in making this happen.
Yeah, this is Morgan. I would definitely second that, Sean. He's been, he's been a really great point of leadership for us.
Yep. So we're not hiring a grant writer. And one of the reasons is Phil recommended that he just, he was of the opinion that a grant writer wouldn't add a lot of value at this point, because we can do a lot of what that, we would want that person to do. And when Heidi and Angela talked about the various things that could be done by that person in that position, Phil basically stepped forward to do that. So he did a lot of the writing of the Massoma Foundation, Massoma Bank Foundation grant. We'll be using that as a template. He has a number of years in nonprofit accounting and has connections among wealthy individuals. So he's introduced me to the world of donor-advised funds, which I don't really know much about, but I do know that they can end up giving you a lot of money for projects. So I guess that's about all I really need to know. And we'll be pursuing not only foundations that could route money to us for this project, but also these donor-advised funds as well. So it's an exciting time. It's been fun.
All right. Any other committee reports? Going once, going twice. Wonderful. The director's report.
Sorry about that. I keep on hitting other tabs and have a hard time finding my way back to this one. I'm looking at the agenda. So I'd like to suggest a joint meeting date for the foundation, the trustees of the 10th of November. I, I'll send out a doodle poll to see if it will work for the group. But it is something that the bylaws require. So, and we'll be talking about that issue we touched upon earlier in this meeting, the routing of funds to the that issue we touched upon earlier in this meeting, the routing of funds to the, to the trustees from the foundation. We have our CIP meeting scheduled for the 21st of October. Sean Mahan has put it this way. He said that is, that it's his CIP that he's, he's proposing. So he's really taking some ownership over it, which is a good thing because he's really advocating for the library to be funded in this way. It's not a public hearing. And, but we can have representation at this meeting. So I'd like to invite the chair and the treasurers of both boards to the meeting to represent the library. Sean is good with that. He does want to see what the statements are that we'll make and suggested we lay some groundwork in talking to city councilors ahead of time. I've kept in touch with Erling Highstead through the pandemic. I'm just, I've gotten to know him and especially King Ryan Lander, his wife, he's on the city council. I know George Sykes pretty well. And so I can call him about that. Sean recommended that we talk to Cliff Bealow as well. And then some other, other counselors. I don't know if there are members of this board who would be willing to do that. I don't know. You know, besides George and Erling, I don't really know the, the city counselors very well. Is there anybody, do you, do you think there's value in doing that first? And then is there anybody who would, might be willing to talk to the counselors to kind of pave the way for us to, to present this project to them on the 21st of October?
Karen Zook is a city counselor, right?
Oh, and I'm sorry. I totally forgot Karen Zook, who happens to be on our foundation as well, who.
So we got soon she's on board, so probably we'll talk with her. And Sean and I have spoken about this, but I, and I'm happy to attend the meeting. This is going to be also a remote meeting?
Correct.
Because I, I, no, I'm not sure if I'm, if I'm flying back. I think I'm flying back on the 21st. Oh, let me check that, Sean. So I'm not even sure I can sit in on that.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, well.
Yeah.
If we get the treasurers there and then maybe another officer could attend. Susan has her hand up.
Do you want to say something, Susan Valiente?
Yes, I already said it. However, I will repeat it with my mic now on. Sean, will you have any bullet points or some information that could be used to talk with city counselors?
Yes, I could do that. We could really share what we're, what we're sharing with the public when we're going out to make asks. That seems like a really good, you know, resource to use. You might as well use that, what we're, what we're talking to potential donors about.
I'll talk to you maybe tomorrow or some other day then about this. Okay?
Great.
Do you have other things, Sean?
Yeah, I think we have Steve with his hand up and.
I think first thing, Sean, I believe I can attend the meeting, so. I should be available and, and I agree with Susan, if we have some talking points or a little elevator speech or something to raise it, it, it's a huge help in terms of introducing yourself to the people and getting the conversation started.
I'll, I'll share that with the entire board. We just put that together within the last week or so. The, the foundation hired a graphic artist for this project at a really reasonable cost. But she put together a really nice list of talking points. I'll share that with the entire board tomorrow, just so you have that. It'll help, help you give a little elevator pitch. So, and Steve, I'd like to also, I've been thinking of you the last few days. You suggested spending up to, I think it was $25,000 on this fundraising effort. Very wise move. I think I hadn't planned on asking for any sort of dollar figure when going into that trustee, trustee meeting. But the, it's paying dividends. Hopefully it will pay dividends and, and will be realized with our asks. So thank you.
Good.
Sean, do you have further, anything else to report in your director's report? I see you're muted.
Thank you for the reminder about that. So the plan for the north side of the Kilton Library has changed a bit. I think at our last trustee meeting, we talked about possibly putting a fence up around the, the area that was a trouble spot for us. Which is close to the Upper Valley Plaza, I believe is what it's called, where Yama is, Burning Headquarters was there for a while. There's a frame shop over there. We've taken a number of steps to address the number of people who are congregating there. I won't get into all the details about what people were doing there, but it's really decreased to almost nothing in that, in that space. And so with the measures we've taken, plus with things that we're looking to do, we think we can get away with not spending money on a fence. We wanted to do wrought iron ballpark figure came in at around $14,000, I think it was. So we thought that was a bit much, especially given that we're just not seeing those crowds. So just wanted to update the board about that. And there is one more thing. I have to ask your permission. I don't think you need to vote. You've done enough roll call votes. But our, one of our policies involves gifts of non-monetary, of a non-monetary nature. And the policy actually says that, I'm supposed to bring this to board for approval. We had a gift of a, offer of a rocking chair from Fran Chickering in memory of her grandmother. It's a lovely handcrafted rocking chair that we believe will find a home. I can't remember. I think it was Lebanon Library. I can't recall actually at this point, but we'll find a home for it. I ran it by our furniture committee. We got to select the wood that we wanted. If you're familiar with the Vermont Welcome Center, when you're coming up 91, there's been one in that, that space for years. It's just a beautiful rocking chair. So we'll be getting that fairly soon. That is all I have.
Wonderful. Amy, the deputy director's report.
All right. And I will add to that, the furniture committee is meeting. We have, we have a good amount to spend. We had put some extra money in the budget last year because the furniture at Kilton is now much of it, 10 years old. And most of it's held up pretty well, but it's looking a little worn in parts. But we liked that rocking chair so much that we may actually, we're, we're meeting soon, but buy, purchase some others to match it. And it will actually be at the Kilton Library, not in Lebanon. We just have a space picked out for it there. But that is part of my report that we are going to be adding, adding some furniture to Kilton and replacing some of it. We are keeping pandemics very much in mind, whether it's, you know, or, or any sort of, it's, it's made us think about how we clean our furniture. So we're looking at a lot of wood and some very, very cleanable fabrics as, as we go forward. And we should be doing that with, ordering the furniture within the next month for the, for Kilton. The exciting news from the library is that interlibrary loan has resumed. It may take a little bit longer. This is, we're at the end of, well, we're at the beginning of our second week doing interlibrary loan. So it's, it's just ramping up for us now. There are a lot of quarantine protocols. It gets quarantined on our end. And then the state library is concerned about the van drivers. So I believe they quarantine it again at some point on their end. So things may take a little longer than usual. But we're just so thrilled to be able to offer interlibrary loan to our patrons again. And, and our patrons are already taking advantage of it. For any of you who are interested, we just, we used to have the form on our website and we've reopened that form. So you just, just fill out the form and it, it sends it along to the appropriate people. Contact free pickup is, is really what's taking most of our staff time. We're, we're happy to do it in patrons, but that's, you know, it's, it's a lot of our day is, is that. But boy, are patrons happy. I've come into notes slipped under the door from people telling me how happy they are, which is, is really lovely and nice. And we're just glad to be able to do that. Our youth services people, Amber and Nikki, along with our outreach librarians left to have been continuing doing programming. Summer reading officially ended. We had a surprising number of people. I don't have the number, but it was, they gave us the numbers and I should pass those along to you. Really quite, quite a few people participated in summer reading on all levels this year, from children to adults. They're continuing to put out craft kits and Maker Mondays and things with the contact free pickup. And those are, are being very well received. It is banned books week and I know they have a few banned books week, banned books week projects that have been going out, going out to people. So, so people are plugging along. I mean, they're just doing a, a great job and people have been coming. I know our trivia nights that we're continuing to do have been wildly popular. I mean, they have like upwards of up 20 people who are showing up for these things. And it's definitely expanded the number of people who can come. So, so librarians are continuing to be creative and things are, are moving along. That's my report.
Great. Thank you. Next is a discussion of staff appreciation. Recognition of our staff. And I think Laura Barrett initiated this, but Sean, do you, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just gonna remind Laura, just to let you know, Laura, I've put this on the agenda in case you wanted to talk to this. But if you don't, if you don't, you want to come for a later meeting, that would work. I just thought you might want to.
Oh, since I'm here, I'll say what's on my mind and then everybody can decide. I know it's late. Really, I just thought it would be nice to, to the board, to acknowledge, you know, our appreciation, support, you know, to the library staff, just acknowledging what a trying time this is on so many fronts and just that they're, what a great job they've been doing. And, you know, I thought that would feel good to receive. Always feels good to receive recognition. But I think that this was a particularly isolating time. And so I just wanted to bring that for people's input. And it could be something simple. I order a bunch of note cards and we decide on a message to write. And some of us, you know, divide up the task and write note cards and just mail them to people. It could be something else. I don't know. I just wanted to bring it up because I think it would be a nice idea. I guess I'm now saying, let's open this for discussion.
I think that's a great idea, Laura. And I think, I think, I think a little would go a long way, honestly. Like I think, I think, I think the staff have been really doing a lot and enduring a lot during, you know, throughout all this. All, everyone on staff. And I think it'd be cool to do something that sort of shows them that, hey, like we are, we are aware of you. We know what you're going through. We really appreciate your perseverance through all this. And I, I kind of like the idea of a note, note, like a personalized note, like divvying things up. Because then it's not just sort of like a rubber stamp kind of thing, but it's actually like, hey, I see you. And I, you know, it's like a relational person to person thing.
Steve?
I guess I also want to say, I think it's a great idea. And I think especially as we're moving forward with opening the library more, that I think we, it's good to let them know that we appreciate what they've done to date and that we're not just sort of casually piling on more. And so anything we can do to help them feel good about what they're doing is, is a positive.
Susan Valiente.
Yes, I think that personal notes are very, very charming in many ways. And they really express the thoughts of people having for the work that they've done, more so than many other things. So I would be in favor of that. And I can think of several who I would like to write notes to. So yes, I'm, I'm sure we all have beautiful note cards, crane, whatever, that we could use to be able to write notes to people.
This is Laura. Since I'm not on the, since I'm just on the phone, I can't tell if someone has their hand raised. Can I speak now?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's great. It sounds like sending notes to people in mail would be a good way to do it. I think I used to have really nice stationery and then I don't know what happened. Maybe I'll just blame it on my kids. That's the easiest thing to blame everything on. But I'm happy to also just order some. I found some pretty cards that just say like, thank you. Or I could just find something pretty with, you know, trees and leaves or flowers on it or something. So that, you know, and I could contactlessly get them to people. I think if that's our plan, then what we would need to do is divide up the, the staff list among people. Maybe Sean or Amy could put up a list that would be in like a private space of Google Drive where we just had access or something. And then we could each say, oh yeah, I'll write to that person. And then I guess we'd want to decide, do we want to just totally personalize it? Or do we want to have some shared language? I agree with whoever said like cookie cutter thing doesn't feel good. But, you know, if we wanted to share some things, so I don't know. And then I guess the other thing we would need is to get the logistical, just to get people's addresses and stamps. So that, and I'm happy to buy the stamp, but we just need addresses to get them to people. So that's a multi-step process, but does that sound like the right process? Or is there something I'm leaving out or something that would make this simpler?
Could the trustees pay for this out of trustee funds of some sort?
Yes.
Good.
We have, we have a lot of stamps, so you wouldn't have to buy stamps, Laura.
Okay. I just didn't want that to become like a big thing. I don't know if Dartmouth is, you know, to get $5, you have to write all these expenditure request forms and everything. So I'm, if it's simpler, I can just buy it. But sure, that'd be great.
Do you remember the hiring process for Chuck?
Yeah, that was, we ate pizza and then offered him the job. I was like, what? The quiet phase didn't last very long for that one. Why don't I then, would it be better, since it sounds like we are in agreement? But of course, if we're not, someone should speak up or send an email. What if I just communicate with Sean or Amy and we can kind of work out the details? And then I'll, I, I can email the board and say, hey, here's how we're doing it. Here's the list, you know, whatever. Does that sound good?
I'm happy to work with you on that, Laura.
I'm happy to help as well, so.
Great. Well, thanks, everyone. And again, I can't see any of you, so sorry. But if I'm cutting this short, just follow up by email or something.
All right. That brings us to other business. Is there any other business? No. Oh, wait, Morgan. Is there other business? No.
No, I'm so sorry.
Good. I'm glad there's no other business. That brings us to our favorite part of the meeting. Adjournment. Would someone like to make a motion that we adjourn?
I would. I would. I keep cutting out though. So I've lost connection like six times. So I'm glad I'm here for this. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
This is Susan. This is Susan Valiente. I will second that.
All right. And now we'll go to our last roll call vote of the evening. Susan Valiente.
Yes.
And it's gone. Steve Taylor.
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And Emma?
Yes.
And Susan DeRocher?
Yes.
And Laura Barrett?
Yeah.
Fran Oskedel, yes. We are adjourned. Thanks very much.
Fran, do you have time for?
Thank you, Fran.
You have time for a quick meeting?
Thanks, everyone.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Good night.
Can I send you an invite? And for a different meeting? Cause I don't trust Microsoft Teams. We're being recorded right now.
Right.
And I
Are we doing this right now?
Yeah. Do you have just a few minutes?
I have a few minutes before the debate begins.
Oh boy, I forgot. I'm going to send you a quick invitation, uh, for a Google meet.